Present, Mark is remote, but Jean is not here. We can stand for the pledge allegiance? And Janelle, do we have any open forum? Nope, perfect. Can I have an approval for the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, Leo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Tammy, yes, item passes. Approval for consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Anyhow, do you vote?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Tammy, I, item passes. Hey, committee reports, policy?
No, no meeting.
Southwest Metro?
Southwest Metro had their monthly meeting last Tuesday, and we discussed in length the big project that we've got going, and that is the purchase of the Dean Lakes Building to be used as the school site for Southwest Metro Intermediate. We had reports from several people who did work for our district and looked into the building and how structurally sound it is, and gave us a lot of feedback as to how good of a building it is for being 13 years old, which is a pretty new building. We also did our regular monthly business as well, but that was the main part of our meeting, was the discussion of the purchase of the Dean Lakes Building. And then we had a vote, and it was a unanimous vote, to bring it to the individual school district members for ratification as well.
Special Ed?
We did not have a meeting for CPAC.
Unity?
No meeting.
Wellness?
No meeting.
Early childhood?
That's Jean.
Sorry. Fitness and Aquatic, 2014?
We, we didn't meet, but I'm gonna put something together for the next meeting when I'm there.
Yeah, I think Mark too, talked to Sandy too about, we, yeah, at our October 12th meeting, I'd like to go over the 1920 results of budget. Sandy's got everything put together, and then Mark was obviously part of the joint powers meeting today. So we'll have a report for you at the October 12th meeting.
Okay, that brings us up to our superintendent report, and welcome back, Mr. Dipperner.
It's a pleasure to be back. Grateful to be here, and also very grateful during this time gone, our administrative team was, did a wonderful job. Like I told you in the email Friday, it's, just got a little worried because no one missed me. They did so well, but especially with Tony and Sandy's leadership, but with all the directors, we got Maron here tonight, but, and the principals and everyone really stepped up, and it's not a position we want to be in, but it's a very difficult learning model, difficult to set up administratively, a lot of prep work for teachers, and, and big changes in nutrition, transportation, custodial stuff. I mean, it's everything, but they've all done a great job, all of our employee groups, so it is great to be back. I'm back now part-time this next week, and then starting next Tuesday, October 6th, I'll be full-time. So the last couple of weeks especially started feeling better and was able to get the doctor to write me a permission note to come back in early. So Sandy made me do that, but anyway, some good news too with, you know, football and volleyball. Today was their first official day of practice, so that's a good thing. You know, these kids, you know, you talk about the academic learning, everything, but one of my biggest concerns is the social emotional part. And obviously, whether it's fine arts, athletics, all this type of stuff, very important type of things that I just don't want kids to lose that experience. So that was the only sports that were not in competition. So that's gonna get going, and we're trying to work out something with the middle school too, and those activities too. And then, yeah, I'm gonna give you an update right now where we're at with things about, I shared some, a few things with you via email last Friday, but I'm gonna get a little bit more specific here on a possible change in our learning model as we go forward here. So I just got a little PowerPoint here. Thank you. All right. First, I mean, our guide is what, what do we really believe? And as we go through this, we do have parameters, obviously, requirements through the Minnesota Department of Education, Minnesota Department of Health. And we need to work through that, but over, you know, I keep telling, I told our administrative team before I left, I tell all of our staff all the time, our mission is to support, engage all students in high levels of learning. So we want to do what's best for kids, but especially during this pandemic, and all the time, but during this pandemic, we want to have the safest learning environment possible for students and staff. I mean, that's a highest priority, is to do it safely, but again, within whatever learning model we are in, high levels of learning. And all of us, you know, and, you know, it doesn't matter what position you are, but especially what I tell our administrative team during this time, we gotta be positive, we gotta be flexible, we gotta be collaborative, and we gotta be solution oriented. We can't, you have this pandemic, you have these limitations on what you can do, you can't sit there and complain about it, you can't play the blame game and waste your time, you know, bashing the state for telling us what to do and all that stuff. And you can't make excuses. You just gotta, you know, like I say, do those things and do whatever we can to, to, you know, reach our mission about supporting, engaging all students in high levels of learning. So that starts with that, and as we make a decision here in the next couple of weeks, it always comes back to those things. Now let me go, we need to talk about what do we know right now? Well, here's what we know. COVID cases in all three counties, La Sure, Scott, and Rice the past four weeks, or I should say last two weeks, and we're anticipating at the end of this week, which will be our fourth week, from talking to the public health directors at each of the counties, is that they're gonna be below 20 cases per 10,000 people. So to do, for elementary, if you're between 10 and 19 cases on this 10,000 threshold, you're, it, you're, you can be in the in-person learning model, okay? We could not be in that from their recommendation or guideline because we were over that at Scott County for a while, and then La Sure County. But everything's been trending downward. All right, that is not the only thing, that is not the only indicator we use to make a decision. And I'll have to be making a decision in the next week or two here, but other indicators include where, where the cases are by zip code or city. For example, let me give you a little La Sure County one. A lot of the cases were in three other cities south of us. They weren't, they had much more cases than we did. And, I mean, you can look all this up. You gotta look in the school buildings, if there's infection cases by students and staff. And then also, you need to also keep in consideration the age group within the counties, and they're tracking this data. We just received some good data from La Sure County on Friday is the difference between elementary, secondary. There's, I think, 12 or 13 cases in elementary right now, for example, in La Sure County overall, and 60-some in secondary students. So it's like five times greater the infection rate at the secondary level than the elementary. And you've heard this before, in grades K through 5, or ages 10 or 11 and younger, there isn't as many cases. But we take a look at all those things before we make a decision. Some other things, just so you know, what do we know? We have three neighboring school districts that currently have daily in-person learning for students in K-5. TCU and Prior Lake are both planning to transition into elementary in-person learning model after the MEA break. And there's staff concerns. It doesn't matter the employee group, it could be administratively. Everyone reacts differently to this. There are some people that are a little uncomfortable, some people don't care at all. It's, you have a continuum on that. There are some classes we're a little concerned at, at probably at the fifth grade level in two of our buildings, which are a little high, at 25, 26 in a class. So, you know, we're trying to fix, you know, address, if we go to in-person, how we're gonna address that with social distancing. But keep in mind, when you qualify for in-person learning model, there are no social distance requirements. But common sense and best practice, you still want to keep, you know, some, you want to keep as much as social distance requirements as you can, whether it's, you know, on the bus, in the classroom, or wherever it may be, lunchroom, whatever. And obviously, we're starting to get more questions from staff and parents about, because they, everyone can see the data. I mean, there's no secret here. You can look it up. So they see that we're below 20. People are asking, when are we gonna go in-person? So what is the planning timeline? Today I met with the three elementary principals. I know they're gonna be meeting with their staff about, you know, just in regards to that, get their input on the planning process. But, you know, in the next two and a half weeks, I think there's some people that think it's a little too aggressive. Some people say probably would disagree with that. But from today until October 14th, we will problem solve because there are a ton of concerns. There are possible pitfalls if we don't plan this properly. We need to develop a staffing plan, and that's gonna be the most difficult thing. I'm just gonna tell you that, to be able to get this accomplished, and also have a sound communication plan, you know, to our staff, to our parents and students. And then also decide on a professional planning day that we'd have no students for elementary before, like I said, we're shooting for October 19th, the first day of in-person learning. I do want to say this, we can plan for this, and for example, if the case counts, counts go up by county or city, or especially in the building, we might be staying hybrid. Remember what we told you back in August? We have the three learning models, and right now, the, or early on, the data showed us that we are a hybrid. But if we can go in-person, if we qualify for the in-person and on all those indicators, stay with that. But things could change even before October 19th. It might not. Or we might go in-person learning October 19th, and two weeks later, there could be a breakout. So again, going back to what I said about being flexible, it's very important. I will say this, starting hybrid, hybrid is by far the most. The amount of prep work it is for teachers is unbelievable. It takes a lot of work. I mean, the nice thing is the low class sizes, and we're getting kids in there two or three days a week, but it's a lot of work. But starting hybrid, it's easier to transition. If you start with this transition to in-person or distance learning than it is, it'd be really hard. I'm gonna just tell you, but if we started in-person, for example, and then trying to go to a hybrid, it took a lot of time and work with our teachers and staff and our administrative team to get that done. So that's where we're at with that. Tony, you wanna come up too? And here, I'm doing all the talk, and I've been gone for seven weeks, but Tony and Sandy, do you have anything to add to the presentation that I have here in regards to, as we move into possible in-person learning?
Make sure, and I'm pretty sure Superintendent Dipperner said it, but this would be K-5 only. 6 through 12 still remains in the hybrid threshold, so that would remain the same. I think the biggest thing that, you know, we could say that he's already said is we are planning, and there is so much planning. This, this isn't just gonna take place in a couple of days or one week. We need to let parents know, our staff, you know, nutrition services, we're meeting tomorrow with operations, busing. There is a lot, a lot of planning that would take place to go into this. We're doing it for the right reason. It's the right thing for kids. We want our kids in the buildings. But as Tim has said, there's lots of information, and I'll let Sandy say anything, and then if there's any questions that myself, or Sandy, or even Maron can answer, we'll definitely do that. Do you have anything, Sandy?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything specifically to add. I think that our first month has gone very, very well, and that is due to everybody's planning efforts, and we look forward to hopefully being able to move in-person for K-5 soon, so.
I just want to add too, I didn't mention this, but for secondary, you might say, well, why can't secondary do this too? The threshold for them is nine and under, so it's under 10. I'll be honest with you, and, and things change considerable, considerably, middle school and high school are gonna be hybrid for a while. I just, if that happens, and that's such a low case, it's, it's really tough to meet that too, just so everyone's aware. If you get questions about, well, why not the middle school and high school then? It's, it's a lot more difficult to reach, to get under 10. It could happen, but we'd have to see, you know, three, four weeks of that before we probably could go to that.
Has there been any indication or information sent out as to why they set that so low?
Sandy, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I think the rationale that, that the Minnesota Department of Health and MDE gave at the, at the beginning was just that 10 and under, age 10 and under really don't really get, are affected, or spread it. But at that high school level, that's where, like Tim said, in La Sure County, of all the kids' cases, it was only 12, 10 and under, but there were 66, 11 and over. So that is the reason why.
Other question, go ahead, Leo.
As far as the, the couple of classes with the larger class sizes, have you looked at non-traditional spacing for them? Like putting them in the media center cafeteria or something?
Yeah, we're gonna look at everything. We're gonna look at everything. My thing on this whole thing, again, you can admire the problem because there are gonna be legit concerns coming up. I mean, whether it's administratively, we had, you know, things are, we're thinking of some pitfalls and concerns, and, and I know the teachers, other staff members will do, but I believe you gotta be solution oriented. Anytime there's a problem, there's always a way to address it. And I think we can do that in a safe manner. It's gonna take some work, it's gonna take collaboration. The thing I asked our principals, for example, that when they meet with staff is the one thing that's gotta come away from of it, not necessarily at their meeting tomorrow or Wednesday, whenever they have it with their staff, but after that, in getting their input, have them be, take some ownership too with that on how they can make it as safe as possible. You know, I don't know, you know, what's going on now? It's been going on for a while, and people are getting antsy. I mean, you know, you got football and volleyball. Now with football and volleyball, you know, I got an email about the facilities right now, and we're gonna move the timeline on that up a little bit, but, you know, we'll do our best. It's still gotta be safe, we gotta stay within the requirements that we have with the Minnesota Department of Health, the Minnesota Department of Education, and just move forward with that. But it's, again, I can't emphasize enough, it's not, you know, one person or just a small group of people, you know, putting this together. We will collaborate with all of our employee groups to make sure it's, you know, we reach our, our mission on this, high levels of learning, and then a very safe environment. Anything else?
Yeah, the, the distance learning, folks. So with this plan to transition to in-person, how are we gonna handle if there's like an influx of, you know, like 400 and some distance learners that now feel like, okay, I want to get back into the classroom now that it's gonna be five days a week? I mean, how are we gonna address that?
Yeah, well, I think we want to give parents plenty of notice that we're thinking about this, because we know there are some parents that might move to distance learning, but there also might be some that come back too. So we think there's gonna be movement both ways. And, yeah, we just have to kind of play it by ear. You know, some of our classes' sizes are really big in distance learning, you know, some, some aren't, so it depends upon where they are, and we'll just have to try to adapt.
Is there gonna be a requirement to have a, like a decision made by a certain date?
Yes, yes, that, we discussed that today. We for sure gotta see the data this Friday, because it's every two weeks. And if it's below the 20 range, that would mean four weeks, all right, four weeks of, so I would say shortly after that, whether it's Friday or the, the following Monday, or, I mean, we want to give parents enough notice. Just one thing, on your thing about people coming in, there could be people going out too.
Sure, okay.
So I, I mean, I know a family out towards Eagleview that if it's not hybrid, you know, they'll go distance before they go in-person.
Yeah, it's sort of, we can't make our, that, that can't be a indicator
for a decision because it's so unknown, but it's something we're gonna have to deal with. Tony, you have something to say?
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah.
So I would say go on, I mean, I would say it, you know, the board's gotta be fine with this, but after we get Friday's thing, I'd probably say it'd be Monday, the 12, be the 12th? The 5th, Monday, the 5th, just to give people enough advance notice. And like I said, I'm open for feedback. If you think that's too early, I mean, I could do it, I could wait till, I could wait till the 9th, but I think people want to know as soon as possible. And like I said, if we have an outbreak, if I announce it on the 5th that we're going in-person, and all of a sudden by Friday or the following Monday, we have an outbreak, whether it's in the buildings or in the county and city, you know, we have to go back to hybrid, then we'd have to go back to hybrid. You just, you gotta be super flexible on this. Go ahead, Sandy. Oh, Tony.
We really want to make certain that we get out early enough to let parents know that we're planning on doing this and what that exact date will be. So if someone, and as everybody has said, could go both ways, if someone truly wants to make a learning model change, if they're in distance learning now, and they want to come back full-time, or if they're not comfortable with full-time, and then the other choice will be distance learning. There would be no more hybrid. We want to make sure that those people have a clear understanding of what choice it is they're making, and we'll work through that. But at some point in time, we need to know what that will be to accommodate our staffing and make certain that we've got good staffing numbers. It's not a lot of time, but we'll give them as much time as we possibly can. But I think they probably already know. We just need to have them let us know.
Sure.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. Tough act to follow, though.
Yeah, we have Kelly Smith here from Baker-Tilly to talk about the bond refunding.
Perfect.
Sandy, members of the board, Superintendent Dipperner, thanks for having me here tonight to talk about this bond refunding process. It's been a while since we've refunded any bonds at New Prague, but just a quick summary, bond refunding is very similar to refinancing your mortgage, with a major exception, you, you can't refinance a bond at any time that you desire. There are call dates in place that limit when they can be refunded. Those call dates give the investors a somewhat of a guarantee that they're gonna get their investment return for X number of years before they might be refunded. So you have a, an issue that is eligible for refunding. We had actually looked at it this spring. We're gonna do a little different method called a forward delivery refunding, and had anticipated that it would be nice savings of about $575,000 in total over the remaining life of the bonds. As COVID hit, the markets went crazy, and we backed away from that, and it actually has ended up to be a very good decision because now the savings are about $950,000, so almost twice what we were looking at this spring. So, so the resolution you have in front of you tonight, in short, is called a set sale resolution, and that's exactly what it does. It is setting the parameters for an upcoming sale of, of these bonds that are gonna refund the 2012 A bonds. The sale date is, will coincide with your next, or your second October board meeting, October 26. We will take competitive bids in our offices in St. Paul and relay to, to the district by about noon that day, maybe a little after, because the sale is at 11:00 in the morning, who, who the award should be made to, and then we'll bring that information the evening of your board meeting and ask you to award the sale that night. I do want to point out, there's only about four years remaining on this bond, but we anticipate just under $240,000 savings each year of those four years. So the preliminary levy that Sandy's gonna talk to you about tonight does not have this potential decrease showing on it yet. So before it is final, finally approved in December, we will have this new schedule up to MDE, so they'll be able to correct that and show about a $240,000 savings is what we're anticipating. I think I've covered anything, everything. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Before I stop, I'd just like to thank Sandy. These don't happen on, without any work. We've requested a lot of information for Sandy for what's called the official statement, and that's like a prospectus that goes out to investors who are interested in purchasing some of these bonds. And that requires a lot of financial information about the district. So appreciate the work that she and her team have, have done gathering that information. And then we will be participating in a rating call on October, or excuse me, November 4th, and she will be active in that process as well, really telling the story about the school district and where your rating is. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What is our rating currently, and what are we anticipating? Is it gonna be the same, or what's, what is?
We are currently with a AA3, which is a high-grade rating for a district your size. I think all stars are aligning that you're going to stay the same. We have not seen many districts receive an upgrade during this COVID environment. There's just too many uncertainties. But things that, that are strong factors for you is your consistent leadership in your finance director office and the superintendency. You've, you've had, you know, strong fund balance history. So I would anticipate it's going to stay the same. And you're at an AA3, excuse me. And we use the state's credit-enhanced rating as well, and that's one notch higher, AA2. And that, that also gives, that's like an insurance policy to investors that the state's backing these as well.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Do you have anything to add, Sandy? Okay. At this time then, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution dealing with the providing for and sale of general obligation school building refunding bonds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. The board hereby finds and declares that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to sell and issue its fully-registered general obligation school building refunding bonds in the amount of $12,035,000. The board, having been advised by Baker-Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC, its independent financial advisor hereby determines that the issue shall be privately sold after receipt of written proposals as authorized pursuant to Minnesota statutes. The board shall meet at the time and place specified in the terms of the proposal attached heretofore and receive and consider proposals for the purchase of said bonds. The terms and provisions of the terms of the proposal and substantially the form attached are hereby adopted as the terms and conditions of the said bonds and of the sale thereof, and shall be made available to all prospective purchasers of the bonds. Baker and Tilly is authorized to prepare an official statement and to open, read, and tabulate the proposals and to open, read and tabulate the proposals for presentation to the board. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mark? Mark, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you very much. I'll be back in a, in a month.
Thank you. All right, so Sandy... Sandy's going to talk about our preliminary levy.
Okay, feels like this happens, uh, a lot, but it's, I can't believe it started another year to be doing a levy again. Um, just as a reminder of our levy approval process, uh, tonight we're going to be asking you to approve the levy at maximum, um, because MDE is still finalizing calculations and we also have that bond refunding pending, so we don't want to zero in on a number. Uh, we're able to decrease our levy but not increase it. So, um, we just want to approve it at maximum. And then the final levy is approved after a truth and taxation presentation that will be given on December 14th. Our current preliminary, preliminary levy is increasing 5.83% or a little over $800,000. The general fund is increasing about 4%. Uh, the main reason for this, actually, our student numbers aren't really going up that much because of COVID, but our equalization aid is decreasing and levy increasing for several, several components. Those are equalized levy and it depends on how many, uh, your market value versus your, um, your resident pupil units. And it's a set formula at the state and our market, uh, our, um, valuation for the levy is increasing and so our, our, um, our aid is decreasing. We also have, our OPEB is decreasing due to lower costs in 1920. Um, and I did increase the employment insurance, reemployment insurance levy. Um, right now, the reemployment insurance, uh, we actually, school districts actually, um, reimburse, we don't pay insurance, we reimburse actual costs. And right now with, uh, COVID, it's quite a mess, actually. Um, I've heard some districts, large districts are getting bills for $2 million. Um, it's quite a mess. And so DEED is trying to sort all that out. We might see a very large levy adjustment on that in the future, I don't know. But even though we didn't furlough anybody, um, a lot, you know, some employees that got furloughed used to be our employees and so some of that is charged to us. We also, um, had some employees file for unemployment over the summer because employment wasn't guaranteed because there was no decision on whether or not we were going to be having school this fall. And there's a caveat in the law that allows employees to draw over the summer if they're not guaranteed. Anyway, it's, it's, it's a pretty big mess right now, to be honest with you. Um, I got a bill, um, in June that almost made me fall on the floor and, um, so, um, but I, I decided to increase it a little bit, but we might be getting a pretty big, uh, positive adjustment here in the coming years. They just have to sort it out. Um, there are also some CARES funding at the state that can be applied to it and it is just a big mess.
Can you explain how, how much after the fact are you billed for this? So is it like fifth, the fiscal year and you build for it the following year or how is that work?
No, we're billed quarterly.
Okay.
We're billed quarterly, but we, they told us not even to pay our last quarter bill because it was so mixed, so messed up. Uh, yeah, so I, I actually honestly do not know where it's going to end up. Um, don't know. Um, some, some districts are meeting with DEED to try to go through some of the invoices, some of the larger districts, districts like, uh, Burnsville and Rosemount-Egan, Apple Valley. I mean, these districts got bills for, you know, like in the $2 million. I mean, it was amazing. So we're trying to sort through it right now and it's going to take some time. Uh, community services is increasing a little bit more, 22% or $77,000. There were, um, that last year's levy, there was a prior, a negative prior year, a negative prior year adjustment and this year it's a positive prior year adjustment and that's for that school age childcare that is hard to predict because we don't know how many, uh, special needs children we're going to have for our before and after school program and our RAP program. Uh, so there's just a swing there in those, uh, adjustments. Although the actual amount we're levying has not changed, it's just the prior year adjustments. And then debt service is increasing because of the higher debt service payment in '21, '22, but it will be reduced for our bond refunding. So that will be, um, um, lower when I bring it to you in December. There was also a smaller reduction for debt excess. So every year you're required to levy for, uh, 5% over your, uh, bond payments just to make sure you don't run out of money, uh, to make your bond payments. And then, you know, the mix of aid and levy and, and everything. So every year that, that, um, they do a reduction based on your fund balance and ours is just a little bit smaller than it was last year. Um, estimated tax impact, so district-wide, if property values did not change from 2020, which isn't true, I think we had two or three properties in the district, uh, limits that actually did not change, uh, the levy would increase, um, about 1%, which is an average of $12.17 a year. So even though our levy is increasing because market value is increasing, um, the increase to individual property owners isn't as high. Um, but an average home in the city of New Prague for the 2020 levy, um, is $226,000. If the home value did not change, that would increase $6.87 a year. If the home value increased 2%, it would go up $24 a year and if the home value increased seven and a half percent, it would go up $71 a year. So it's, uh, you know, like I said, it depends on each individual property and the final levy will be lower, I anticipate, because of the bond refunding. So tonight I'm asking for, um, approval at the maximum levy, a maximum level and then, uh, I'll be working to finalize that, uh, for the December 14th meeting. Any questions?
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the 2021 preliminary lev- levy at the maximum allowance?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Leo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Tammy, yes, item passes. We have a resolution to purchase the Dean Lakes Building. Danny?
Yes, uh, before we do the actual resolution, I'd give a little background as to what we're, what we're doing here. And, uh, New Prague is one of the 11 member districts that make up the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District. And we got there by first being members of Minnesota River Valley Special Ed Co-op, which then merged with Carver-Scott to form this entity of the intermediate school district. Uh, the school district, uh, provides services to roughly 4,500 students from the 11 member districts for the various programs. And these programs include special education, career and technical education, alternative education, adult basic education, mental health and correctional programs. Uh, it's very important to a school district to have, uh, membership in a district like this because we are obligated and it's just necessary for us to provide services for students that we cannot provide within our own district. It's, it's something that has to be. And by belonging to this, uh, intermediate school district, we have, um, a situation where we are guaranteed to have a placement for any of our students that need the services of the intermediate school district. Some, uh, intermediate school districts do not offer that guarantee, but we do. And, uh, it's a very important thing because not only is it good for the students, but, uh, for our district as well. Uh, finding appropriate places for students with IEPs is extremely necessary. And if you can't do it yourself and you can't find, uh, uh, another location to have these students go to, you have to provide them yourself at a tremendously large expense and some districts have had to go through that. So it prevents us from having, uh, a tremendous physical, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, a tremendous financial obligation to provide a service for, uh, one or two students that, uh, can be provided for through the intermediate school district. Um, last, no, in, uh, the school district, uh, in the school, school year, uh, 2019, 2020, I was decided that we need to look at our facilities and to see what we're, what we're lacking or what we need to do to keep pace with the number of students that need our services. And at that, uh, facilities meetings that we had, I was made up of superintendents, uh, the staff members of, uh, the intermediate school district, uh, school board members from district, different districts and I was, uh, a member of that task force. And it was decided that we definitely need to look at some other facilities to take the place of what we've got right now because we were outgrowing what we currently had. And, uh, as for, good fortune would have it, uh, it was discovered that the Dean Lakes Building was for sale. And the Dean Lakes Building was a training facility for, uh, a special education, I'm sorry, for, um, for a computer firm, for a computer firm. And that computer firm trained its employees at that location and it was now vacant. So we decided, let's take a look at this, uh, facility and found out that it was something that we possibly could purchase. Uh, by belonging with, uh, the other 11 districts, uh, uh, we could, we could do it. And, uh, not only could we do it, but we could do it at a tremendous, uh, savings compared to what other, uh, district, intermediate school districts have had to do. Uh, we have, um, three other intermediate school districts that I'd like to compare ourselves to. Independent, uh, inter, interdi-, uh, intermediate school district 287 has, uh, purchased facilities that cost them $90 million. Um, I'm sorry, $50 million. Intermediate School District 916 has purchased facilities, uh, for $82 million. And, uh, Intermediate School District 917 has spent $8 million on facilities. So you look at what we're trying to advance here is the purchase of, uh, a facility that will cost roughly $6 million. So, I mean, just that, that difference in expenditure of funds is, uh, overwhelming. What, what the, uh, board here in New Prague has to do is to agree to back this resolution and be a part of the other 10 districts in backing this, uh, resolution. And when that happens, then we will be obligated to, to provide the, uh, backing, the financial backing for it. Now, the interesting thing is that it will really have no, you know, financial direct effect on our taxpayers because from the money that we save from not, um, renting facilities and having to upgrade, uh, the older facilities that we have, the expenditures of that, we will actually see that it will not make, uh, a change in the, uh, tax obligation to our property owners. So it's really, really, truly a win-win situation. And basically, it's, uh, one of the best things, uh, one of the best scenarios that could have happened as far as our membership in, uh, the intermediate school district. Uh, Tim, do you have anything else to add or Sandy?
No, I think you're, I mean, we're going from renting, uh, you know, two locations going to one. Financially, it's zero impact, uh, and it's going to be a much nicer facility. Just so you know, um, Sandy, you're, you probably, uh, you know, these are programs that we can't. I mean, more and more over the years, we've kept our kids here, but there are some things, some kids, we just need that, uh, special help. Just so you understand, uh, we probably have 13, don't we have 13, 14 kids maybe in that? But we get charged according to the number of kids we have. Um, and, uh, no, I think it's like, I agree with totally what Danny says. It's a win-win situation for us.
And you brought up an important point, too. Our assessment for our part of the payment for the facility will be based on our usage. So that was a very important point.
Yeah, we don't have many, but like, like Danny said, we never, we never get turned down because we're a member. And if we, they have people from other districts that are trying to send their kids in and they have, might have to go on a waiting list, but they, or they have no guarantee that their kids can be in the program and they get charged more, too.
There's also a facility that we, they will be selling. They own part of a, a, a building. And so we have leased levied for that building. And so, um, a little bit unclear about what we're going to do with the proceeds from that sale, but, um, that's going to be a longer-term project, but we'll be able to sell, um, part of that facility. And then as we levy for this, uh, these bonds, um, these bond payments, then we will own part of that Dean Lakes facility. We actually own a piece of it.
So the buildings that we currently have are in Chaska, correct?
Uh, and also in Shakopee.
They're in Valley Green and Shakopee and also in Tak- Town Shakopee Mall, Shakopee Town Mall.
That one we rent, the town, the...
Yeah, that one we rent, so we'll be able to get out of that one and then sell the Valley Green.
Pay the rent for that facility.
And then we've got the New Beginnings Building in Chaska and then...
And then we do rent other facilities and other...
Right there, the school...
401 Building, the big one.
Yeah, the 401 Building, thank you. I'm like, I know what it is. So we won't have to rent any of those anymore.
That's correct, right.
Well, no, we, we actually own, I mean, the intermediate district owns those facilities.
401 is owned by us, that's another one that we...
Well, we stay there then?
I'm, I'm talking, I, I have a list of the, uh, facilities.
The only two that are being replaced by mine is Valley Green and the Shakopee Town Square.
Okay.
Yeah, the ones that we rent.
Got it.
Yep. The other facilities are owned, I mean, most of them are owned. There's one in that little town, um...
St. Pontefatius.
Yeah. That is leased, but like the 401, the River Valley Ed Center, um, New Beginnings, those are all owned.
And we're going to stay in those, though. We're not going to move everything over to the...
No, there are some locations that still meet that specific area better than having, uh...
Got it.
Transported to this facility right there.
Perfect.
Whatever is best for the student in terms of maintaining some of those off-site locations will stay there because it's a, you know, better thing for the students.
Perfect.
Uh, and this, in this building, you know, being new, uh, also has the potential to be used for other, other things. There can be, we'll become the, the landlords and because of that, other facilities, uh, might want to use it. Uh, for example, adult basic education, uh, we can have maybe a, a college, uh, set of classes that can be, you know, housed at this facility also, you know, as long as the space allows it. So it has, it has great potential for the future as well.
Good.
And that's, and that's very important.
There's two documents. One is the purchase agreement, the other is a joint powers agreement, which lays out the ownership of the building and how that will work between the parties.
And I'm missing that one, I think. The, the joint powers, what?
The joint powers agreement is attached, yep.
I...
Just the resolution.
Gotcha, okay. Okay, thank you, okay. All right, that's a clarification. Um, are there any further questions about the resolution approving the joint powers agreement? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to look at the resolution approving the joint powers agreement relating to financing and acquisition, renovation and equipping of an education facility, Dean Lakes, in Shakopee, Minnesota.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Whereas a proposal for joint powers agreement has been prepared, which establishes a joint powers entity, uh, with our school district and independent, uh, school district, uh, Southwest Metro and its member school districts for the purpose of establishing a framework to finance the acquisition of real property and the renovation, betterment and equipping of the education facility on said real property, which is located at 4601 Dean Lakes Boulevard in the city of Shakopee, County of Scott in Minnesota. Whereas a copy of the proposed joint powers agreement is attached, uh, incorporated by reference. Whereas the school district is a member of Southwest Metro, whereas the administration of the school district has reviewed the proposed joint powers agreement and has recommended its approval to the school board. Now therefore be resolved by the school board of independent school district 721 as follows. That the attached joint powers agreement be and hereby be approved, that the chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute and deliver the attached joint powers agreement and that in the event that less than all of the collaborating districts, um, defined here, the resolution shall be void and have no force or effect. In other words, it has to be a unanimous agreement. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was moved and seconded. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Danny? Yes, item passes.
So our last item on the agenda is our November meeting date.
I thought we addressed this last time.
We did talk about it. We just had to vote on it.
I've been gone for a while.
So we did move the meeting at the last one. And that was with the bad assumption of my part that the canvassing dates would also be extended, but they were not. You still have to canvass within three to 10 days post-election. So with Veterans Day being on Wednesday, the 11th, we really only have the 12th or the 13th to canvass our election results. So that's why this is back on the agenda. My apologies for that mistake.
So you want us to move the meeting to which day?
We can do it on the 12th.
You don't want it on Friday, the 13th?
I think you better go 12th, not Friday, the 13th. I know Leo probably wants the 13th, but I think.
So it would be, so Thursday, November 12th, 6:00 PM.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to move to that date and time.
Second.
I gotta write this down. Okay. Since it has been moved and seconded, Kim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Tammy? Yes, item passes. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Mark, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Tammy? Yes, we are adjourned.